Okay, so for the mock review, we'll be going over Career Development Award. In the first time it was submitted, it was not funded. The second time, it was funded. We will be reviewing the one that was not funded. So the criteria for the Career Development Award is a focus on patient-oriented clinical investigation. And we go over this with the grant selection committee during the meeting before we review all the grants. Significance and originality of the proposed study and hypothesis, appropriateness, feasibility, and adequacy of the proposed experimental design methodology, prior research experience and accomplishments of the applicant during research training, quality of the mentor, and the plan for mentoring interactions with applicants, availability of institutional resources to support the proposed project, and potential favorable impact on career development of the applicant. So those are the criteria on which all of our Career Development Awards are based. At the Grant Selection Committee, there are three reviewers. There is a primary and a secondary reviewer who are required to submit a critique. We have, excuse me, we have a statistician who also writes the critique, which sometimes is shorter, oftentimes is not, depending on the quality of the biostatistical plan. We try to match the applications to experts in the field. However, this doesn't always happen as we have a limited number of reviewers and they have a limited amount of time. So we try to match as best we can, but not necessarily an expert in your field. And it's, as noted earlier, it's absolutely critical that you explain the science clearly. So this is the scoring scale that we use. They're divided into high, moderate, and low impact. You can see, you know, whether it's no weaknesses, negligible, moderate impact has some minor or moderate weaknesses, and then low impact has at least one major impact, or one major weakness. And a minor weakness is an easily addressable weakness that does not substantially lessen the impact. Moderate weakness has a weakness that lessens the impact, and major weakness, obviously, is a weakness that severely limits the impact. So. So here out, on out, this is how we'll run the, this is how it would run in the Grant Selection Committee. I'll act as the chair. And we give the Career Development Awards nine minutes for review. So I'm going to be timing this from when I start introducing the application. And this is, yeah, so this is the way we have run the awards. So. So this is ID 555, Mary Smith, from the University of North Dakota. The primary reviewer is Don Hirschman. Secondary reviewer is Heather MacArthur. And the biostat reviewer is Suzanne Dahlberg. Can you all please give your scores?
My score was a four.
Mine was also a four.
Eight.
So, Don, can you please give the project background?
So, this is an application from a oncologic surgeon who's interested in quality of care. She's interested in the relationship between surgical details and quality and long-term quality of life and, as measured by patient-reported outcomes. The project is taking data from a large NSABP trial, looking at patients that got chemo- radiation, various different chemotherapies. And the thought, and they were followed over time and had a variety of different quality of life and patient-reported outcomes, as well as toxicities measured. And the thought was to develop a instrument for assessing surgical quality, abstracting that information from all of the charts that were enrolled, the patients that were enrolled, and then looking at the relationship between surgical quality measures, such as margin and other features related to the anastomosis. And then down the line, looking at that relationship with toxicities and patient-reported outcomes, both at one and five years. I thought that this proposal was novel. It would definitely could lead to important information that could guide treatment and improve quality of life in colorectal cancer patients. But there were some real specific problems, all of which I felt like were addressable. The first aim is to identify the measures. And it seems that if you're going to be writing a grant, you should know what those measures are ahead of time. And there really wasn't preliminary data. The second aim is to perform abstraction from the pathology reports. However, again, it seems that you would want to know that you can do this, that it was feasible, before doing the grant. So both of these things, I thought, were important information to have before submitting a grant like this, from a feasibility standpoint. The third aim is where you get into looking at adherence to these measures, although you don't know what the measures are ahead of time. And then the fourth is looking at this relationship. And I thought the main part of the goal was really to delve into the relationship. However, it's not really a major focus of the aims. So, you know, given, given the fact that it was a high-priority applicant and question, but there were some major weaknesses, it definitely influenced my enthusiasm. As for the applicant, it was an outstanding applicant. She had both MD and PhD in health services, an outstanding track record for publication, thirty-four papers, many as first author in high-profile journals. And she had had some grant support in the past, such as an NIH loan repayment. In addition, she had outstanding mentors. She had two co-mentors, both of which had different skill sets, and brought a lot to the table. The problem was the letter of support from the mentors, none of, neither of which outlined a career development training plan. While they were both, you know, liked the applicant and was very, were very enthusiastic about the applicant, they didn't actually say what they would be doing over the course of the award. I thought that the grant was feasible to be able to do, and she had unique access to the cooperative group data. She had a letter to show that she had access, as well as she would have substantial institutional support. If she were to get this grant, her protected time would definitely increase. So, for all of these reasons, I give it a four.
So, I also gave it a four. I first wanted to applaud this candidate for addressing outcomes, measures in this field. This is a difficult area to do innovative research. You can't randomize surgeons to do one procedure versus another. So I applaud her for trying to innovate in this field. And I thought it was incredibly resourceful to take a pre-existing, prospectively-conducted study and to ask a new question with data that was already collected from that study. So I, I thought that was incredibly resourceful. Overall, the application was well-written and organized. As Dawn's pointed out, the candidate was strong and has an appropriate experience and expertise and is developing, or sorry, is obtaining a PhD in health services, which should serve her well. The letters of support, I thought, were sincere and strong, although I shared the same concerns about a lack of a clear mentorship plan. And it wasn't clear to me what support would be provided to the applicant in the absence of this award. I thought that the background and significance section of the application were excellent. I was really convinced, in reading the significance section, that this was a real unmet need area. And, and I was convinced that this, that research was needed in this area. So I thought that was a really strong part of the application. I shared some same concerns around aims one and two with Dawn, and that aim one, really, the literature review and the expert panel surveillance really would be better, served as sort of background data. So it'd be nice to have that completed in support of this application, rather than having it as part of the application. I thought that the career plan was a little bit vague, and some of the language there was flowery, and I thought that she could tighten that up a little bit. And I think that there was a lack of distinction between how her research was going to be unique from that of her mentors. So that warrants some clarification.
We've only got a couple more minutes to go.
Sure. The analysis plan, I'll leave that to the statistician. And I thought the limitations could be fleshed out a little bit. There's an assumption that there's no difference based on the chemo RT. That's a critical part of the protocol, and that was an address. But overall, I thought the applicant and the project was, was strong and showed a lot of potential. And I would certainly encourage this applicant to apply again, having addressed some of these minor issues.
So I agree that the applicant, as well as the idea proposed in the application, were very strong. However, I thought that the statistical approach in the application had, had some major limitations. Starting with aim number one, they propose conducting structured interviews with members of a rectal cancer surgery advisory panel. And there's a very sophisticated table by which they propose coming up with these technical quality measures. And yet, they don't really say, give a timeframe for this. And I'm a little bit concerned that the timeframe allowed for the grant, that this may actually take up, potentially up to maybe years to, to perform this. Pertaining to aim two, they'd like to perform abstraction of the operative and pathology reports on all the patients enrolled to this clinical trial, which is 1,608 patients. But later on in the application, we find out that only 987 patients have actually completed the one-year quality-of-life measure, and that the study was amended to have the five-year quality-of-life measures added. So that data does not yet exist. There is no timeframe for when that data will be obtained. And so therefore, there is no statistical plan for the five-year measures included in the analysis plan. At the same time, the applicant would like to generate two different publications from
If you can wrap it up.
Okay, sure. From analyses of this data, looking at the one-year measures separately from the five-year measures. But if you're going to go through the effort to have all of this beautiful, you know, longitudinal measurements of quality-of-life data, wouldn't you want to account for that statistically? I thought that the acknowledgement that there's variation in the detail and quality of the operative path reports called into question how feasible it would be to assess the technical quality in a quantitative fashion. And I also note that there was no stat support in year one of the grant. So I question, who would be involved with actually doing the design of the study and helping with the case report form development for, for the entire proposal? I guess I should wrap it up.
Yeah. Thank you. Okay, so from what I'm hearing, it's a strong applicant, strong application with some minor weaknesses. The letters of support could be stronger, the mentoring plan could be stronger, and the biostatistics were not good. Can I have you restate your scores, considering the discussion?
Yeah, I would stick with a four.
That's what I.
Yeah, due to the lack of the statistics, I'd stick with an eight.
Okay. Thank you. So then we'd have the whole committee submit their scores. So we went over by over a minute, and this is an ideal situation. So you can see that there isn't really a lot of time for each of the reviews, for each application. This is for the CDAs, and so we have nine minutes for these. For our YIAs, we have six minutes. So, you know, there, there's even less time for that. I think even, correct me if I'm wrong, but for RO1s, there's only, there's fifteen minutes, I think. So even for large grants, there's not a significant amount more time to go over each of these grants. So that's why we're trying to impress upon you the necessity to have clear, concise proposals. So I, so Don.
I don't know if you want to say the number of grants that are reviewed in a given day.
Yeah. So, so for Conquer Cancer Foundation, we, we review approximately thirty CDAs and a hundred YIAs in a day and two-thirds, I'd say. So, yeah, from eight in the morning to five on the first day. We do eight till, we try to wrap around two on the second day. And so, yeah, a hundred and thirty grants in, in less than two days. And so, to go over by a minute on this, you know, with a hundred and thirty grants, really significantly impacts the whole, the whole process.
Go ahead. Yeah. I think that this is a very classic example, where the primary and secondary reviewers were actually pretty favorable.
Mm-hmm.
But this application was really undermined by the lack of attention to the statistics. And I think this is a very classic and sort of frustrating scenario. So I really can't encourage you enough to, to spend time on statistics. And also, as you can imagine, not everybody in the room will have had, really, a lot of time to review. With that kind of volume of grants to review, not everyone, everyone in the room gets to vote, but not everyone is going to be able to spend the kind of time that the primary and secondary reviewers spent looking at, at your application. So coming up, again, this is sales. So coming up with a strong argument for why your research is important can really infect the primary and secondary reviewers, and can really thereby infect the other people in the room. And I, I can't impress upon you enough how impactful that can poss, that can possibly be.
So Dawn, you had actually reviewed this in the grant study section, right? So, both times, right? So can you address, can you, can you address the improvements that were made in the second?
Confidentially. Can I address the what? The second one?
Yeah, yeah. How, the improvement?
Yeah, so the, the applicant really took to heart, I think, all of the comments that were made, and came back, got, with the preliminary data, the exact criticisms that we had, came back with having gotten that preliminary data, both having already defined what measures they were going to consider, quality measures, and then also coming back showing feasibility of doing the abstraction. And also came back with a very detailed analytic plan. So I think coming, you know, being a strong applicant, now, unlike NIH grants or other grants, where you actually respond to each of these, it's a new submission. So the reviewers could be completely different. They don't see a response like they might for another type of grant. But making those changes clearly made the grant much, much better.
So actually, now, we are, last year was the first year that we now allow them a one-page response to the previous critiques.
Oh, that's good.
For the, for the Conquer Cancer Foundation. So I think maybe we'll open it up to questions, then?
Do you think the response will, if they all do submission with a new reviewer, that the modifications are made, or do they go back to the same reviewer?
They don't necessarily go back to the same reviewer, but the reviewers have access to that response.
Thanks for the great session. I just, why for YA, we don't provide any score or percentile, like NIH format? I think it will be useful, for example, for me, that where I stand in whole sorts of things that.
I think that that's, we'd have to address that with the board. Our policy is not to give the scores or the percentile. And so, we do provide the feedback from the reviewers, and so you'll be able to address each of the critiques there.
So, the, the grants that get reviewed are about half of all the grants that are submitted, more or less. And so, of those, you're, so you're review, already reviewing the top half. And so you can get a cluster of scores sometimes, as a result of that, just given the, the volume. So the percentile differences can, can maybe not necessarily be reflective of the quality of the grant. And so, given the nature of these grants, may not be so meaningful.
Thank you.
Maybe knowing if you were triaged or not would be a better, you know, because a lot of the, I think sometimes it's like to the, out to the decimal points, in terms of what the cutoff is.
Thank you.
What do you do if you get a grant review back and they don't really say anything bad, and it's kind of bland? I mean, do you try to put it back in again? Should you rethink your whole idea? Like, what if there aren't really substantive comments?
I think then you have to really question how enthusiastic the reviewer was, right? Because if the reviewer was very enthusiastic and you had minor weaknesses, they would probably say, you know, you should, you know, these are addressable, or, you know, give, give more, more feedback. But you also don't want to hang your hat too much on any one reviewer, because they may have been on a train while they were reviewing the grant and didn't have time to put anything, you know, in the system, and it's not required. So, you know, you sort of have to reassess the impact of the grant, and then speak to your mentor about it. But you shouldn't get completely discouraged either. If it's a, you should, if it's a good grant, hopefully you'll apply to more than one place. Hopefully you'll get some legitimate feedback.
Firstly, often, if there's a long list of comments, it's often because there's a lot of, it's a promising grant, and there are a lot of fixables. And they're identifying the fixables that can be easily addressed. So a, a long review might not necessarily be a bad thing, a long list of critiques.
Any other questions?
You know, working with more than one mentor, just because, you know, mentors may be good, but they may have different skill sets. And if you're working fast station, you may have extra mentors, you may look up for all the stuff, but maybe in the lab, you may want to, like, can we, is that something that people said more than one mentor?
I think the, the majority of grants I've reviewed, the individual has had more than one mentor. More, maybe just because of the nature of what I do, that that's more common, maybe not so common in a lab. But the majority of, of the grants I, I review have several, several mentors. And then I think it's important to do exactly what you said, specifically say what each of the mentors is mentoring you on.
There's a question in the back of the record.
You said that there are like thirty-five a day you have to go through, and you need nine minutes per, per thing. And then, my question is, before, you have to read all this, right? And so how, how long is the time to, to read through that? Or?
So, what, you know, the, the Conquer Cancer Foundation will assign the grants to reviewers, like a month, a couple of months before they're due. You have a fair amount of time. Often you'll get like nine grants, a couple of CDAs, several YIAs, that you review, and then you submit critiques to. They get everybody's critiques, and then they, sort of, based on the average scores, they cut it. But then they also look at people that have very, if, if an applicant has a one and a nine, then they'll go back to the reviewers, try to figure out why, or if one was really off. So then, so then you have all the comments, and then it gets broken down, so the half of them get reviewed over the course of two days. And as you said, it's a hundred and thirty-five grants or something that are reviewed over the course of two days. And, you know, so the, all the reviewers, not only have they reviewed it once, but usually of the ones that are selected to be discussed, they go back and look at their grant again, and then look at their comments, and then look at the comments of the other reviewers, to see if other reviewers picked up on something that they didn't, before coming to the, to the review session, so that they can be very focused in what, in what they're saying.
So just to add to that, the statisticians review about twenty grants each, on average, since there are many fewer of us than there are medical reviewers on the committee. I'm not sure if you were also asking, how long do we spend personally reviewing each grant? And for me, I can say initially, maybe it's two hours per grant. By the time I read it, I step away, I jot down some notes, and then go back to it, read it again, and prepare, you know, more thoughtful comments, in preparation for the, for the meeting, the face-to-face meeting that takes place. So I feel as though, and I feel like everyone else, as well, puts a lot of time into reviewing the applications.
How do you look at grant applicants that don't necessarily have a very focused, you know, career, let's just say, subject? Like, for example, some people have a very specific interest in breast cancer, triple negative, treated with a very particular type of agent, and that's what their life research is in. For me, I have a mentor who is a PhD, and he doesn't work on a specific type of cancer. We work on genomics and tumor heterogeneity. And so, many of the projects that I work on are not in a specific cancer type. And so I find it really difficult convincing people that I have, you know, a broad range of knowledge in a particular, you know, field, because a lot of the papers that I'll publish, even though they're under the umbrella of genomics, will be in, you know, glioblastoma or pancreas, or, you know, various different things. So how do you look at that, and what do you think is a good way to kind of look at that more in a positive light, I guess?
I mean, did you want to?
Well, that's challenging. I think you need to figure out how to weave your own story. So just like you need to be able to give a job talk when you're looking for a job, a grant application, you need to sell yourself. And, and it's tough when your interests are more diffuse, but there has to be some common thread that you can draw out. And I think you just need to spend some time reflecting on what that is. And maybe being, spending some time being thoughtful about it could actually be incredibly helpful, because maybe you are more diversified than you might like to be. Having some self-reflection might help you figure out what your best next projects, career steps, mentoring interactions might be. I think it's a good exercise.
Yeah, I don't think that it's a huge limitation, depending on what the grant mechanism is that you're applying for. If you're applying for a clinical translational grant, then you need to sort of make it clear what that translation is going to be, and how you envision your career going forward. Do you, you know, do you envision yourself twenty percent in the clinic, you know, eighty percent in the lab? Plenty of phase-one researchers do multiple different tumor types, and, you know, it doesn't really matter. As long as you can make it clear what your focus is, and where you see yourself five years from now. If you see yourself as a laboratory scientist that is working with patient samples, and, you know, going from the bench to the bedside and back, then that's a totally reasonable career plan. But, you know, I know for the Conquer Cancer Foundation, the YIAs can be more basic, but the clinical, the Career Development Awards have a more clinical research-oriented. So you have to really read the RFA to make sure that your grant matches with what they're asking for.
And from an administrative point of view, I mean, we ask you your research area and your focus area. And so, I try to assign reviewers that have that expertise. So where you categorize yourself that way, really, it influences a lot of whom I give those reviews to. So if you say you're pancreatic, then I put you a pancreatic and a genomic, or something like that. Whereas if you don't categorize yourself that way, I'll, I'll put you with what I can determine best where you fit.
That could be an area where having more than one mentor would benefit you. And so adding a mentor in the specific disease area of interest would be, would be beneficial. I think one word of caution about having multiple mentors, and it's something I've seen across applications, is kind of communicating well with all of them, and keeping them all on the same page. Because you want the letters to read consistently about what's being presented in the application. Often, I'll, I'll read the letters from mentors and realize that what the mentor thinks is going on is not reflected well in the application. And so, because it's such a competitive process, those inconsistencies are often, you know, things that plant seeds of doubt in our mind, especially when it comes to, to scoring.
Would you comment on the preferred format of a specific aim page? Some people, they are Some people, they start with a little summary and then overarching hypotheses, and then what about the number of specific aims? The sample you present has four specific aims. I thought four specific aims is a little too much, maybe. Is that, what do you think?
I mean, I think it really depends on what, you know, what is expected in the amount of work that's within those aims. This is a three-year grant. The, the, some of the aims may have taken longer and others not. Sometimes you can do multiple things at the same time. So I think often what some people do is they'll put a, a table in that sort of indicates what they're going to do when, from a timeline perspective, to convince the reviewer that they'll be able to get this, the work done in that period of time.
Thank you.
I think as long as the specific aims are specific, I think where people fall apart on the aim section is that they're too, I think Nora gave a few nice examples, but they're just too general, and they are specific aims, and I think really refining what you're trying to achieve is really helpful, and often that's where the reviewer starts reading to get an overview of what's to come, and that can set a nice framework for, for the real meat of the application.
Are there any more questions? If not, then we'll transition to the roundtable discussions. Or I have one more thing, too. So just to remind everyone about the survey, go to surveymonkey.com backslash S backslash You can also sign up in the back, and there are hard copies as well. So we have the roundtable discussions with several table leaders. After twenty minutes, we'll have you switch tables to give you the opportunity to talk to as many discussion leaders as possible, and I think that's all I had.